Okay, it's 7:30. This is the City of Brainerd City Council meeting. It is Monday, October 4th, and it's 7:30 a.m., B.M., P.M. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Pritchett. Stengline.
Here.
Erickson. O'Day.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Approve the agenda.
Motion by Stunek, second by O'Day. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Item five is the consent calendar. This is a notice to the public that all matters are considered routine by the council. Will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time. The council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved, Johnson.
Motion by Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day. Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yep.
Stengline.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. All right, that puts that together. Next up is item number six. Community Member of the Month, Mayor Bedeau.
Thank you, President. As you guys know, every month we put together a Community Member of the Month. And this month, it is a special recognition to one Mary Divine Johnson, who I see has just made her way into the chambers. Those of you who have been following along at home, this is the first time we've had somebody back in the council chambers to recognize them. So it is a large step forward in the recovering of ourselves from this wonderful thing of COVID. But I have asked Councilwoman Stengline to speak on Mary's behalf.
Thank you, Mayor Bedeau. I am so excited. Mary, to honor you this way. For those of you who don't know, Mary has been deeply involved in putting together the Sesquicentennial Celebration that went so well, and coordinating with all of our partners, and frankly, being a great partner herself. And for Team One, the trivia contest. So are you wearing? You aren't even wearing your socks, Mary. You should have been wearing your socks. So thank you for all that you do for Brainerd, for our community. Thank you, Mary.
And I'll just second that in that what a week we had. And what a great celebration we were able to pull together. But behind the scenes, you know, the waters often appear calm at the top, but they are turbulent underneath. And there's always the struggle of trying to get so many events together. And having been through that process, and being a part of that group for 18 months, and watching as people flounder to figure out who's going to step up to the plate. I can't say enough for yourself, and for Councilwoman Stengline, and for our wonderful city administrator, as well as Jesse, our intern, who really shouldered the bulk of the efforts. And I was able to be a part of that, but you guys picked it up amongst yourselves and ran with it. And specifically, Mary, you did such an amazing job. So I have here in my hands this wonderful certificate. And it reads, Community Member of the Month, Mary Divine Johnson. For her dedication to the coordination of the Sesquicentennial Celebration of the City of Brainerd, her leadership and commitment to these events, and the week as a whole, were vital to its success.
Photo op.
All the way back here. We have wonderful photo opportunities here. We're going to get photo booths in here, so.
Oh, no. No, thank you.
How to not get the microphone in here. Yeah, maybe not.
It's kind of empty over here.
Thank you, Mary Divine, and Tiffany, and Mayor Bedeau. We will move on to the next agenda item, which is item seven, our council committee reports. Item 7A is the Personal and Finance Committee Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have four quick items on the agenda tonight. The first of which is the sale of retired fire department equipment. And the motion is to authorize the sale of retired fire department equipment using the public auction site. And I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're selling the 1991 engine that was replaced a couple of weeks ago with the new 2021 fire engine.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next item is the Office of Traffic Safety Toward Zero Death Grant Contract Resolution. And the motion is to pass the attached resolution authorizing the police chief authority to execute the 2022 fiscal year toward zero death grant, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stengline. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Oh, a resolution. Thank you. Chairman Johnson, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
Thank you. The next item is termination of park maintenance employee. And the motion is to authorize the termination of a probationary parks maintenance employee effective immediately. Further, to authorize staff to start the hiring process to backfill the position, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stengline. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Thanks for carrying the weight on that one, Mike.
Carry more later.
He's here for us when we need him.
So PNF does need a little help.
Yeah, we did on that one. All right, the next item is the revised job descriptions after creating the Public Works Department. And the motion is to recommend, well, it's not to recommend. The motion is to approve the updated job descriptions, and I so move.
Of a motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day. Any discussion?
What am I picked on for now?
Any discussion? You're helping out PNF. They need, they can't, their boat is rocking. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
End of report.
Thank you very much. So in my agenda, it says just the Public Works Agenda. So safety is off the table.
Oh, no safety.
It says right on there, Public. Chairman O'Day, let's have you.
For the committee.
Let's have you run through the agenda and make the motion if you would. If there's things we need to do, let me.
So typically, in a meeting, I would have Paul explain.
Yeah.
We only have three items.
Right, let's do it.
There's one with, two probably with a little more discussion. The first one's pretty quick. But typically, I'll just have Paul run through the first item, and we'll go from there. Is that all right?
Yeah, you keep, you do it.
All right, first item.
These guys will help second.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Maybe.
Maybe. First item is event application at the Zion Lutheran Church. It is the Zion Lutheran Church Trunk or Treat. So I'll just have Paul explain that one. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, which is odd to say. So this is an event request from the Zion Lutheran Church for their annual trunk or treat. That's held on October 31st from 4:00 to 8:00 at the church parking lot. The reason this is on the agenda is they typically ask to close the alley by the church as part of the event, so they reduce traffic traveling through the parking lot. Basically, all the facilities are open in the church for the people to use, and it's just a safe alternative to trick or treat that don't require kids go door to door. Really no other issues besides the conditions as listed, that the applicant call and coordinate any requests for traffic control one week prior to the event, and to ensure that their insurance certificate is submitted prior to the event application being approved or the event taking place.
And I so move.
Okay.
I can handle the second.
So are you motioning that we approve the event?
Yes.
And Chairman, or Chief Stunek, a second?
Assistant, so.
Assistant.
Assistant to the chairman.
Okay, we have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stunek, to approve the annual Zion Lutheran trunk or treat. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Yeah, next item is a discussion regarding a streetlight policy subcommittee. The staff was directed to come up with a new streetlights policy, which they have now. One point they have left is to figure out our new decorative lighting that we want to shop for. There's thousands of choices, and so we decided it would be a good idea to put together a subcommittee, whether it's Paul and myself, and Jennifer. I don't know if any of the other members of the council are interested in. I was thinking about myself and maybe one or two other council members, which the two I thought might be interested are not here today. So if anybody else is interested, feel free to step forward.
Perfect.
Or I'll carry the weight.
Anything you want to move, anything we need to move on this evening?
I would motion that we form a subcommittee for the streetlights policy.
Okay. You don't want it to just be SPW?
It can be. That's probably what we would have done if we had a meeting.
Right, I understand, but I'm presuming that they're not gone for good, are they?
I'm not sure yet. Haven't talked.
Our footrest seems to be gone for good. Anybody down here need to be on the streetlight committee? No. Okay.
We'll take it.
So SPW carries the ball on that one. I would like to make a comment. Since you're looking at lights, look at those old Sheraton lights. I just think they look so cool. And there's still some in northeast. And I just looked at a beautiful picture of the original St. Joe's Hospital with them all around. They're like super cool. So, okay. Administrator Bergman?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if, I think part of the reason was if we had a subcommittee that was just a couple of members, we could have some informal discussions and bring back a formal recommendation to safety in public works. I guess I would defer to our interim Public Works Director, City Engineer, Sandy.
Paul, what do you think?
So, yeah, so I worked on drafting a policy which goes over spacing and intersections and all that kind of stuff. And then when we got into the actual looking at different alternatives besides what we have today, you know, we have the Pinto lights in neighborhoods. We have the tall gray poles on trunk highways. There seemed to be some interest to change to a more decorative lighting in areas. And when I spoke with Trent, who is the electric lead over at BPU, there are thousands, literally thousands of options to choose from. And in order to have a productive discussion, I thought it would be better to have more informal kind of work session type discussions instead of continually coming back to SPW over and over again to try to weed out what we like and don't like. And so that's kind of the purpose of this, was to hopefully come back to SPW with a draft version of a streetlight policy that includes what we're proposing for a change to our current street lighting standards, looking at costs, looking at installation, all that kind of stuff.
Okay. But you could do that informal meeting with SPW.
Could, yep.
Right? And then you'd be one step further down the road. That first SPW meeting where you had the proposal would be pretty easy. Right?
It would be, yeah. I mean, we could certainly go that route to just, there's a lot of options, and I just don't want to get bogged down in long meetings into details.
That's what we're good at.
Yeah.
Bogged down. Mr. Langle.
Mr. Chair, because SPW is a standing committee of the council, if you've got two out of three that's a quorum of the standing committee, so it's going to act in the same fashion as the committee itself.
I understand that.
Okay.
As long as there, as long as the public is notified of an SPW meeting. I just thought it would be a step ahead. I mean, otherwise, what are we going to do? Call for citizen applicants and create a six-month, six-headed monster on this? No.
Don't tempt me with the good times.
One meeting.
Okay. Okay. I think we're overcomplicating this. Mr. O'Day, you've made the motion. You have the floor. Clarify your motion. Who do you want this to be?
I think what would make most sense at this point would just have the mayor be, step in instead of the other two.
Okay, so yourself and the mayor. How would that work?
That would be perfect.
Is that your motion, Mr. O'Day?
That was my motion.
Any second down here to have Mr. Mayor Bedeau and Chairman O'Day?
I'm fine with that second.
Okay, second by Stunek. Now, discussions. Okay, Tiffany Stengline, then Gabe Johnson.
I would like to make a subsidiary motion to refer this back to the Safety and Public Works Committee because I don't feel that we are, I don't feel comfortable making that decision for the Safety and Public Works Committee when two-thirds of them aren't here.
Well, yeah, but okay. Well, I don't think we're going to vote on anything but the committee.
Right, but I think they should be involved in the formation of a committee, of a subcommittee.
I think we, Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I think we just heard that if two of us are on that subcommittee, it can't meet. So that's why I.
Oh, you can. You can meet. You just can't meet in private.
Okay.
You just have to call an SPW meeting.
Okay.
With proper notification. Thank you, Tiffany. Anything else?
No, but you, there would have to be a second to my motion to refer it back to the SPW.
Okay, so.
Got a motion on the floor ready?
Yeah, we do. And she's calling this a subsidiary motion, and I don't think it is. I think it's a totally different motion completely.
To refer the matter to committee?
Get it out.
Oh, good Lord. You know, I, Mr. Chair, if I may, while she's looking it up.
Yeah, Gabe Johnson.
I've only been on Personnel and Finance for my six years on the council. Is this how safety and public works is run every meeting? This is a disaster.
Right.
Maybe that's where the two are gone.
They quit on me.
They'll never be gone again.
So your motion, Tiffany, is to refer the forming of the committee to SPW?
Mm-hmm. And there's the, I'm going to pass that down.
Gabe, you, or Administrator Bergman be the judge. Motion to refer. But this doesn't say if this, these rules are after a motion has been made.
It's a subsidiary motion. It can only be made after a motion is made.
You know what? I'll accept it. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second to refer? Hearing none. The subsidiary motion by Stengline dies for lack of a second. We're back to the original motion to have Chairman O'Day and Mayor Bedeau help formulate the plan to bring to SPW. Okay, so that would be the committee, is those two. Is there any more discussion on that motion? Gabe Johnson.
Mr. Chair, I tend to agree with what I think you were saying, and this overly complicates it. I think SPW should be the committee, so I'll vote against this motion to form a separate subcommittee.
As will I. So, but, but not for the, but just because it, just get it to SPW and get it over with. Okay, any further discussion on Mr. O'Day's motion with Stunek's second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Better call the roll.
Yep. Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Nope.
Stengline.
No.
O'Day.
Yes.
And Bevins.
No. That motion is defeated.
All right.
So now, anybody else care to make a motion on the streetlights? It doesn't necessarily have to be to make a committee. That was just Mr. O'Day's discussion. You want to, we probably should do something with the street lighting policy. It's going to come back to SPW no matter what anyway. I can pretty much heard staff is looking for direction on this. I know that since the beginning. So I'm going to move on to this, and it's going to SPW. Okay, just so you know.
So we'll just have a longer meeting. That's no big deal.
I don't particularly care.
Oh, yeah, I know. You won't be there.
I won't be there. You guys can handle it.
You will, actually.
Yeah. Maybe you'll take Chairman Johnson's advice and get some work done.
Okay.
All right, next up.
All right, third and final, hopefully less complicated, complicated item is a discussion of the downtown snow removal Special Services District. We went over this last meeting, and we called back to see if there would be more business owners interested in speaking on this subject. So Paul, I don't know if you want to fill everybody in on where we're at with this one, or how much you want to go over it. Yeah, I guess I'll leave it up to you guys. If you've read through the information, if you want any further information. We went through the whole presentation at the last. Yeah, I think. Safety and Public Works meeting, and. I think we're all kind of up to date on it, but I, I trust there are people that are here that want to speak on the subject?
They're going to get their, they're going to get their chance.
As this part? As part of this?
Yeah, why not?
Okay. And that's what, if this were a regular public, Safety and Public Works meeting, or it was just going to be a Public Works meeting, I guess.
It's just a council meeting.
So I don't know if, are you taking over now, or do you want me to call the people up to talk?
I'm going to take over because we're going to open a public hearing.
Perfect.
On this issue. So, and then I'm going to turn it back to you, Mr. O'Day, to make any motion that you feel necessary. But right now, to bring, you know, I really think there needs to be a refresher here. There has been some downtown business owners that have thought that there's a better way that we can do the snow removal and the downtown services business. And I'm going to ask them to speak first because they're the ones that brought, that are bringing this forward. Any other downtown business owners that are here, or anybody who wishes to speak on this, will get to speak. But to bring you up to, to, to speed, last meeting, Engineer Sandy, Public Works Director Sandy, we did make a motion to adopt the Special Services District and, you know, dollar figures last time, correct?
Yep.
For 2021, 2022.
2020, 2021. So last year's expenses.
Okay, this, okay, all right. So is anybody confused or all, you're all up to date as to what, what, what's going on here? Okay, anybody have a question of staff? Okay. So this is a, this is a discussion, and it's, there's really nothing necessarily that we have to do. But there's people here who want to speak on this, and I'm going to let them because that's what we're here for. Okay, so if anybody would like to speak, and I'd like, if you would, if you guys could start because then, because not everybody here has, has heard your argument on this side of the table, okay? But the one thing you have to do is you only get a couple of minutes to make your case, and you have to state your name and your address, okay? So I'm going to open the public hearing that's not really scheduled for 7:50 and ask that you come forward and tell me if you have some thoughts on the downtown snow removal in Special Services District. If anybody has some thoughts. I'm going to ask a second time, anybody has, and as soon as I ask a third time, I'm going to close the public hearing. I think that's best. So state your name and your address, and what you think of the.
Lois Hensel with Loaide Oils and Vinegars.
And the address?
Steve Hensel. Loaide Oils and Vinegars. 224 Seventh Street South.
Okay.
Four.
Six nineteen Laurel. Six nineteen Laurel.
We've been mixed up a couple times. Even the post office is a little, we're confused a little bit yet, so anyways.
Can I just clarify before I get started? Did you say that after we had the Safety and Public Works Committee meeting where it was discussed they were going to look at additional things and look into it further? Did it get accepted and adopted in the meeting after that?
I believe so. No, it has not? No. I'm getting head shakes, no, but I thought we did.
What the council adopted at the last meeting was the assessments for the previous year.
For the previous year.
And they have accepted the snowplow contractor, but it going forward can still be changed.
Okay, so did you understand? So we've certified the assessments for last year and have accepted the bids for snow plowing this year, okay?
Perfect.
All right.
So, real quick, this, the reason we're in front of you is because we believe this pertains to two ordinances. The 884, signed in January of 1990, and amended 918 dated December of 91 regarding snow removal from the sidewalk streets in the four-block downtown business area. With those dates, obviously, you realize this was 30-plus years ago. Second assessment, Special Services, I have not seen a copy of an ordinance on this. I'm not saying it's not in place, I just haven't seen it. Covers public garbage, streetscape maintenance, and irrigation system maintenance. So I would first like to discuss from the last meeting, the snow and sidewalk ordinance. So the snow removal ordinance was designed and put into place over 30 years ago. I'm not aware that it's ever been discussed or looked at since then. It's my understanding that the cost assessed is split where the city is paying 45% of those costs, and building owners in that four-block area are paying 55% of the costs. I'm also under the understanding that the city is the owner of streets and sidewalks. So currently, the building owners are paying for what has been described to me as service over and above what other residents or businesses receive outside of this downtown district. Currently with that ordinance, that is the case. But I disagree that the benefits outweigh the costs. The hired contractor has been the only bidder. And he raises his prices each year by 5%. So the contract, in its effect, doesn't have as much of an impact on the City of Brainerd as it does building owners. Building owners, so I think most of you are aware, I'm not sure exactly how many actual owners are in this four-block area. Most of them are investors who get money from rent on a continual basis. Whereas the owner operators don't get any extra help in order to pay these fees. The service of having the snow removed earlier does not outweigh these costs. So if the snow has to be, snow plowed into the middle of the road, and it stays there for 10 hours, it's not going to make a difference. Traffic can still move. So questions that I want to raise is currently, I mean, there's no removal being done on sidewalks outside of this four-block area, and I'm assuming it's being done by the city, along with the buildings, churches. So my assumption is what pays for those services are our taxes, in which I pay property taxes. Taxes getting used for the infrastructure, your roads, your utilities, city-owned properties, which also include parking lots, alleys, takes care of our schools, police, fire, city administration. In the snowplow ordinance, there's a line item in there where we're paying for city administration. So now, are we paying for city administration in our taxes, and then paying for city administration again in this assessment slash tax? And then, in order to have a place to park and have my employees have a place to park, we have to rent parking spots. So two spots, approximately $700 in a year. And I believe it's from a city-owned property, which then.
It is a city-owned property.
The parking lot would be owned, so I would be paying taxes for that city-owned property, so then I'm paying additional money to park in that. So I feel like as an owner-operator, I'm getting taxed twice in some of these issues. In the last meeting, Paul handed out, where he broke down city costs for plowing. I'm sure you guys had that in your packets. So the cost per block to remove snow for 32 blocks outside of this district was $195. The cost that was contracted out for our little four-block area was $450, so more than double the cost. The person that bids got to raise his bid by 5%, and he raises his bid every year. And there's no pushback. Nobody else is bidding. And then there was costs that he had showed for that six-block area, but it was based on overtime, so I'm not really sure. But if the city did it themselves, even with the overtime, it would cost building owners $209 versus the 449. So a huge difference. So a huge difference. The Special Services District Assessment. So again, I don't have a copy of the ordinance, I don't know when it was put into place, but it covers trash collection, street scape maintenance, and irrigation system maintenance. And it's split by building owners, where the owners of the buildings are paying 88% of those costs. So I'm not sure where the trash is getting generated from, but as a business owner, I have to pay for my own trash, and I actually was told I couldn't put my trash in the trash can that I'm paying for in these special services. The irrigation system maintenance, I'm not sure what irrigation system is in place in the city. I do believe the meters in our building, um, but wouldn't that be part of the city's utilities? So if utilities are covered in our property taxes, then am I getting taxed again in this assessment? Lastly, real quick, the street scaping maintenance, or has it's been put to me, the beautification of downtown Brainerd. This assessment, which again, it's a tax, um, is it, it basically is a double tax to building owners. We're paying 88% of these items. And who benefits? Every single person that visits downtown Brainerd, every single person that shops downtown Brainerd, anybody that drives through the community and the city of Brainerd, just for the pride of your own city, so.
Can you wrap it up in a minute?
I will try to.
Okay.
The reason I bring this to you is because.
Include in your last minute what you think should be done.
I think this needs to be reevaluated.
Uh huh.
It causes an un, unbearable burden on a property owner that's trying to run a business versus an investor that owns businesses and just takes in rent. I have to, I'll do it. I would have to work. Basing this on, since we've been open since June 1st, I'll have to work an additional 40 days per year just to pay for those assessments. So, it makes me wonder, is it a smart choice to have a business down in the city of Brainerd? I mean, I came down here in the hopes to revitalize that building, bring it back to its former glory, bring more dollars into the community, bring in the professional appliances because we're sending people down to the cities for something that we can offer here and get more people into our city.
Events, the ballroom.
This is making it different.
Trying to get that going, but when you keep, we got this incredible letter today, another $2,500 assessments from last year. So it's like every time we try to get a little ahead, there's one more, or why?
The, it, it's. The proposed assessment for flowers and city garbage removal and irrigation system, which I'm not aware of, that's going to cost me just $800 alone. So I'm asking you to reevaluate, and, I mean, one of the things that was discussed is the cities already, the parks and wrecks are taking care of trash in all the parks and outside this district, so really, they can't take care of the garbage there?
Conning, nine?
Nine garbage cans in that area is what we saw. And the flowers, it also was discussed that many of the store owners are starting to do their own, so.
But park and wrecks, they have the energy, they have the, they know what they're doing.
I guess the main thing is.
Maybe look at the whole picture, we need to reassess after 30 years of.
To have quicker service, just to get the snow out of the road does not make a difference, but thank you for your time.
We have to wait 10 hours, 12 hours.
Okay, just so, okay. Just so you know, probably nothing's going to happen tonight, but thank you for your testimony because these people, I only heard part of it, and these people heard now your story, so.
We also don't want it done tonight, we want you to think and reevaluate, just look at it, we were asking.
I got that.
Is there other ideas?
And if you need copies of ordinances downstairs, come in anytime during regular hours and you, you can get copies of ordinances. There's people, we have people.
Thank you.
You have people. Anybody else who wishes to comment? And if you wonder why we're holding this public hearing is, these people were told that they could speak at SP&amp;W, and SP&amp;W didn't happen due to circumstances beyond Mr. O'Day's control. So, we're discussing the downtown snow removal in Special Services District. Anybody who wishes to add testimony to the council, now's your time. Come on up. State your name and address. I let them go a little longer because I know they brought this before us and thank you, but I would try and keep her a little bit.
Yep, Marie Kirsch, I own Audi Pine Bakery in downtown at 707 Laurel, and I also live in the city of Brainerd. I, I just would say that it bears looking into, I totally, you know, agree that having this in place for 30 years, like it makes sense to reevaluate it and look at it, but I just want to speak to the benefit that I see as a business owner of having the special assessment, and granted, I, I don't own my building, but I do pay rent to my landlord who in turn pay, you know, pays this assessment. And as a business owner, um, I just, I, I think it's invaluable having those streets plowed in, in the morning, right away, I open at 7:30. I just can't see myself out there having to do additional, you know, snow maintenance and stuff like that, so for me, I highly value that, that is kind of a thing that's above and beyond what normally happens with city plowing that allows my business to have customers come in right away at 7:30 in the morning versus going to Cub Foods where they're paying a snow plower to plow out there, you know, their parking lot right away so people can get in there. I, you know, I don't want to have to compete with that, I want to make it easy for shoppers to choose shop, shopping locally and at my storefront, and I think other downtown business owners would agrees, and in terms of the flowers and all the beautification efforts, I just think that that really helps draw people into downtown, and for me as a business owner, I, I don't have time to put that into, you know, doing my own flower beds and stuff outside of my business, so I appreciate that that's something that is part of, part of this special assessment. So, I would just say like, I, I'm totally in support of looking into this more and seeing like, is this a fair assessment to be making to property owners? But I just would say like, I highly value this service, so I would hate to see it go away, and I would hate to, um, yeah, see snowbanks getting plowed up that would make people second guess whether they want to come and shop downtown, so that's all I have to add.
Excellent, thank you for your time. Please come forward, state your name and address, and tell us what you think of the downtown Special Services District and snow removal.
Brenda Billman-Arnt, I own Purple Fern Bath Company at 719 Laurel Street. And I agree, I think a reevaluation could be in place, but I feel so strongly that we need to keep those services. The early snow removal beautification efforts are so important to downtown Brainerd. People, patrons coming downtown need to feel that it is accessible, clean, and safe when they come downtown, it's important to my business. And as far as snow removal goes too, I mean, I think you also need to keep, to take into consideration residents, there's a lot of residents that live in downtown Brainerd, and if they can't leave to, you know, get to their jobs and, and get out, that's something to take into consideration as well. But I, I really would hate to see those services go away, I think it's really important to downtown Brainerd, it's important to my business.
Thank you for testifying. Anybody else in the room wish to speak on this topic? Anybody at all like to speak? I, I don't know how to see if there's anybody online. No, okay, there's two Jennifer Bergmans on the line, all right. Then we're going to close the unofficial public hearing. Thank you all for your thoughts. Unless a council member has a question or wants to make a motion, this will be an ongoing SP&amp;W, uh, maybe Chairman O'Day and, uh, Engineer Sandy and staff will continue with this if, if needed, and certainly any of us can put in our comments to SP&amp;W. Unless you have something you want to say about this right now, we're going to move on. Yeah, absolutely.
I can say a few words. I think we, we've pretty much just had the same discussion that we had two weeks ago, but thank you for bringing it to our attention. It was probably good for the rest of the council to see this, as Kelly said. One major thing I agree with you on is, it is a problem that we only have one person or one, one company bidding on this, there's no competitiveness to it at all, but it's a big job, and I don't know if there are any other companies that we could solicit for this. I don't know, maybe Anderson Brothers or something like that, but I think there, there are some minor details, just that one thing is what I see for, for our problem with snow removal, because it has to happen. I mean, there's, there's just really no way around it. We could look at some of the numbers as far as what you guys are assessed, but, um, most of the owners are able to split that up between multiple tenants, you guys aren't in that situation, but you do have one tenant that has quite a bit of frontage. You don't.
There's more to that story that should not be.
Okay, well, I just pictured a building.
You can't speak back and forth with the members on the audience because then they can't hear them on.
Correct. I, I was under the impression that you had one tenant, but anyway, it's neither here nor there. I don't know if you knew about the assessment when you bought the building or didn't know about it. I think I would have looked into it before I would have bought the building, but we are where we are. I think there's details we could look at as far as what happens in the summertime, I think they make some good points there, um, see if anybody's getting overcharged on stuff like that. But I'm not going to make a motion on this tonight, but I think staff and, and everyone here has kind of heard concerns both, both ways, and we'll move from there.
Thank you. Paul?
City Engineer. Yeah, so, what I've heard a lot tonight is taking another look at this, and that's what we've provided you in the packet. The numbers were referenced correctly in where we feel that the, the staff time it would take on overtime, because we would be picking up snow when everyone is on overtime that same day, would be $209 per block. Now, the downtown business owners are not paying $450 a block like was stated, they're paying the difference between 450 minus the 209. The 209 that we calculated is right in line with about that 45, 46% that we assess for, or the 55% that's left over is what we assess for. And so, when we reran the numbers back from 1990, when this ordinance was adopted, they're very similar, as our costs go up, so do the contractors. We do solicit about six businesses a year to bid on this service. The comments that have been made, because we used to get multiple bidders, the comments that were made is that we can't compete with the prices that he submits in these bids, and therefore, we don't feel like it's, we were wasting our time submitting a bid because we can't compete with the pricing. And so that's the comments we've received to staff from contractors. We, every year, we send out the letter and the packet and the specifications to all the excavators, Anderson Brothers, local bidders, and no one bids on it because they know it's a non fruitful activity because they can't compete with someone that's been doing it for so long at such a reasonable price.
Excellent. Okay, but before I turn it over to you, I, I believe we are turning this into a committee meeting on this, and I really wanted to hear testimony and see if somebody wanted to make a motion. However, there's opportunities for you guys to talk about this on end, but if you have a thought, if you just want to talk, I'm going to ask that you hold off.
I, I would like to have one brief comment.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to reassure John Q. Public, we assess this every year. We have a public hearing on the downtown assessments every year, and we consider what the property owners and business owners tell us, and we're analyzing it every year. This isn't something we said in 1991 and never talked about, we talk about it every single year, so, just to clarify that.
Thank you for that clarification.
And the public hearing is at the next meeting.
Excellent, the public hearing for this is at the next.
For the downtown special.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Mr. O'Day, this is the SP&amp;W Works, agendas or anything else?
Henry Park.
Thank you very much.
Or meeting.
Or whichever it was, thanks. It was a difficult situation. Next up, no doubt, when two don't show. Next up is unfinished business. This is item 8A, this is the final reading of proposed ordinance 1520, an ordinance amending the Brainerd City Charter. City Administrator Bergman recommends dispensing with the actual reading and holding the public hearing. So, this is. This is regarding the term mill. Is this something you would like to explain or?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chair, I can be brief.
Take your time.
So the Charter Commission met on August 11th to consider a couple more updates to the city charter. Really, there are three items that they're considering updating. One is changing the mill levy language to a percentage of the previous year's levy, which was equivalent to the language that was currently in the charter, but it gets rid of that term "mill," which really has not been used since the, the mid 80s. The other item is to provide more generic terms for organizations who can receive funding and to clarify that those organizations must be in the city limits of the city of Brainerd. And then third item that the Charter Commission is recommending is to remove the employment and compensation section from the park chap, uh, park board chapter of the, of, of the charter. So attached is ordinance 1520, amending the city charter with those three items. The council did hold their first reading on September 20th, and then this evening would be to hold the public hearing and then to consider the final reading, or the final reading of the proposed ordinance.
Excellent. So, item, the first order of business with this is to hold a public hearing. So we will open the public hearing at 8:17 and ask if anybody in the public would like to speak on ordinance 1520. Anybody like to speak on ordinance 1520? For the third and last time, is anybody wishing to speak on ordinance number 1520? Okay, we will close the public hearing at 8:18. The second order of business is we're looking for a motion to hold and dispense with the final reading of the proposed ordinance 1520 and ordinance amending the Brainerd City Charter and remind us Attorney Lango, this must pass unanimously or we read the ordinance. Is there a motion to hold the, to hold or, or dispense either with the final reading of proposed ordinance 1520?
I move to dispense with the reading.
Thank you, appreciate that. Tiffany Stingline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunek. Any discussion on dispensing with the final reading? So this is just regarding whether we're going to read it or not. And it's a big one. Okay, hearing none, uh, this is just a motion, so not a resolution, we will, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries, so we will dispense with the final reading. Number three is to adopt proposed ordinance 1520 and ordinance amending the Brainerd City Charter. And, and this is a resolution? To adopt the ordinance, I believe? Joe Lango, this should be a roll call vote?
Roll call vote, yeah.
And being that it's a charter amendment, it needs to pass unanimously or it won't pass? Okay, so y'all understand, we're going to vote by roll call, and if one person votes no, then this doesn't pass, okay? So, is there a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 1520 and ordinance amending the Brainerd City Charter as outlined by Administrator Bergman?
So moved.
Motion by Stingline. Second by O'Day. Any discussions? Any discussions? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stunek. Johnson. Stingline.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes. Okay, that ordinance is adopted, we made it through that one. We made it through that one. Next up is a consideration of Planning Commission recommendations regarding sober homes. Okay? And just so you know, I know it doesn't say that there's a public hearing on this, but there's a lot of people here to speak on this, and I'm gonna let every single one of them speak. But we're gonna start with Mr. Chansky and see if he can give us an update as to where we're going. We also have Mr. Duval, who's our Chair of Planning Commission, and if he wishes to speak, we're gonna let him speak. Then, if you wish to, you can speak, and then we'll open the public hearing. Okay? Anything you want to add to what's in our packet, Mr. Chansky? You don't have to.
Nothing to add that's in the packet unless there's things that the council would like clarification regarding. Also, Attorney Langle worked closely with the Planning Commission and myself on this issue as well. If there are any questions that the council has, he is also well-versed in this area and can answer them as well.
Okay? Doesn't look like it at this point, but we'll ask them again after the public hearing. Okay? Mr. Duval, anything you wish to add to how the Planning Commission got to where it got? I thought so. Please state your name and address and position.
Thank you. Mike Duval, 468 Tyrell Drive, Planning Commission Chair. The Planning Commission was given this task by the council to investigate whether there are opportunities or ability to regulate sober homes and report back to City Council if that can be done. How would that be done? And so, we spent a considerable amount of time, number one, with the assistance of Attorney Langle, doing the background on what, what other communities are doing and how, how them, bringing that information back. We hosted a lot of discussion around, you know, how those, those other options that other communities are doing are being implemented, and how the city of Brainerd may look and model some of those things. You know, a lot of the examples were managed through the ordinance, the zoning ordinance, so aspects of zoning. And as we explored those and, and was, this was a deep exploration, a lot of questioning, a lot of exploring boundaries, trying to be clear about, you know, different scenarios and, and how would that work in the city of Brainerd. And I think we've left virtually no stone unturned on, on how to, how to, our ordinance could be used as written today. And, and the gist of that is that, that we came back really with the approach that's being presented tonight, which is that it's through the, the rental, the rental ordinance would be the sensible action there, and, and the, the tool that was developed is borrowed from other communities, which is the request for accommodations, a formal process rather than an informal process, which captures the, the, the request and helps staff be able to evaluate whether a request is a valid sober home use, or whether it's something that does not necessarily fit that. And so, that, I think after several meetings, that the recommendation of the Planning Commission was to, to use this approach coming forward here and recommending that to council.
Please stay.
Okay.
Any questions of our Planning Commission Chair? Any ques... I have one. In, in our packet, there's two forms. The first one is referred to as a request for reasonable accommodation, and the second one is the sober home addendum. So, these are to be used in conjunction. Yes, you do the first one, and then if you're having a sober home, you do the second one in addition? Is that correct?
That is correct. And so, basically, the request, the, the, the formal request for accommodation is for any valid request under the, the Federal Fair Housing Act, where someone is requesting flexibility, if you would, from the municipality.
Okay.
And then, the, the, the addendum is specific for the sober home pieces. So, there are some additional questions that would be unique accommodation requests that the city would need to react to, that, that are not necessarily across the, the board of other kinds of uses, say accessibility, for, for someone that may have mobility issues and things like that. Not quite the same. The sober home addendum gets at some of the more specific requests that, that would need to, the, the city would need to evaluate in order to be able to, to decide whether, in fact, this is a, an accommodation we will, we will allow, or whether it falls outside of the scope and it's not actually related to a sober home. It may be a different rental arrangement, for example.
Thank you. No other questions, you're free to sit down. Before I actually open the public hearing, just a couple rules. You can't cheer, you can't clap. Try and keep it to three to five minutes, but I understand passion. And this is your opportunity to give testimony to us. You can't get in an argument with Mr. Duval, Duval, or with David Chansky. You just tell us what you think. If you have a question, ask the council here, and if it's one we feel needs to be answered, we'll try and get it answered right now. But there's plenty of opportunity, eight hours a day, to talk to staff and ask some questions. But tonight is your opportunity to give us testimony. So, it is 8:26, and we'll open the public hearing on the consideration of Planning Commission recommendations regarding sober homes, and ask you to come up, one at a time, state your name and your address and what you think about this. And thank you all for coming.
My name's Steve Sauer. I live at 450 Tyrell Drive, and I don't want to fight with Mike, he's my neighbor. So, our concerns were brought first to the Planning Commission on the May 19th meeting. And at that time, we brought all of our valid concerns to the Planning Commission. And so, they're all on record, everything that we brought up. But when I got this with the addendum, I understand that, and I understand that the addendum, in my opinion, is a good start by asking and creating, whether it's a, it can be accommodated or whether it cannot pertaining to the sober, sober homes. We have two in our neighborhood. We also did give Mr. Bevins a petition signed by everybody in the neighborhood that basically two is enough, we really don't want any more in our neighborhood. Now, understand this, our contention right from the get-go, what the Havercam family is doing, we all agreed, is a very commendable thing to do. Our problem is, is why, you know, the, why are there no regulations whatsoever on it? None. And so, what happened was this, we get the results back now that the Planning Commission was basically gonna do nothing other than create an addendum that addresses accommodations. What it doesn't say is, well, my question would be this. I guess the first thing is, is when we found out just what happened after four months of looking at this and consulting with legal and everything else, we really kind of felt like, there's 24 other residences in there, families. I personally, my wife and I have lived there for 17 years. We just felt like the other 24 residents were totally dismissed, like we never existed because of the results that came out of the Planning Commission on this last go-around. And this isn't the first time the Planning Commission has had this in their hands. So, now, second time around, nothing happens again, other than the addendum. Now, the addendum, in my opinion, again, is good for one thing and one thing only. It does put some accountability on the person that is applying to put a sober home in an R1A neighborhood, single-family housing. One question I do have to the addendum, is there any one thing in there, or is there a guideline that follows along this for each question that the person applying for a sober house? Is there a guideline on her that says, okay, if you meet this requirement, yeah, you're okay, if you don't meet this, not? Is there any one of them that throws a red flag up in front of the planning or the City Council that says, we cannot accommodate that one? Or is it, well, yeah, we can work with that, and they're all just gonna get approved? That's the question we have, just because of where we are today. There have been other situations that have arisen. We do have traffic issues with them. We do have parking issues. We do have people that are driving way too fast through there. We got a lot of kids, family, we just got another new family in the neighborhood with two small children. And it's a series of up and down hills in one great big circle. And with a lot of extra cars parked there, too, you never know if a kid is gonna come out between those vehicles. So, it's a safety concern from our standpoint, and I speak for some of the other residents. But I, that's the big thing, that we would like to know, if they're, if they're all still gonna be approved, no matter what neighborhood? Or if they're just going, that's just to appease somebody, basically? Or is there some hardcore material attached to that, a guideline, so to speak, that says, no, you cannot put a sober home in this neighborhood? Unlicensed vehicles, we've got ATVs coming through there that are stopping. They're not even licensed to be on the street, but here they are. You know, so there's a lot of other things, you know, that are going on in there that you don't see. And I'm only addressing a couple of them, there's some other ones. Couple of the neighbors had told me, they said, you know, we moved in here just a few years ago because it was a nice, safe, quiet neighborhood. It no longer is that. They don't feel safe anymore. Now, and, and, and I, and I don't want that to be construed as me disparaging any one of the people that are involved in a recovery program, because again, the intent that the Havercams have is wonderful. But let's figure out what's, what's gonna best accommodate them and the people that live in the residence right now. And again, we did file a petition from all the residents. The thing that kind of, I just found, I was made aware of it today, in the current connection, there was a write-up, and they did get a grant, which is good, to help them in their vision to create places for people to transition back into being a productive citizen. I understand that. But we never realized that some of the people are coming right to these sober homes right out of jail. Now, don't you think we, as a community, as a neighborhood, we would like to know that, okay, why were they in jail? What was it for? Otherwise, your thoughts can wander off to, well, is this a criminal element that somebody is bringing into our neighborhood? You know, and it was, the only way I found out was in the, it says, men come to the BRH or get referred after graduating from an addiction treatment facility, jail, or homelessness. The two N ones don't bother me, it's the jail one that does. I think that we, as a neighborhood, have a right to know who's living in our neighborhood, plain and simple. Has anybody with the city ever checked on police calls that go to those two residences? Anybody?
I haven't.
Okay. I didn't think so. You might want to check that, because we are getting police calls to the residences. I think that's pretty much all I have to say. Again, that's our concern. No, we're not happy with the decision to put this on hold again, but here we are again, only this time we're with the City Council. And I don't know where it's gonna go from here, to be real honest with you. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Before I call somebody else up, Administrator Bergman, Mr. Sauer referred to a petition that was received by the city? Yes, I brought it here.
Yes, it was.
But never distributed to the council, correct?
I saw it.
So, the council has all seen it.
I think I forwarded it.
Thank you, thank you. Just double-check it, because I missed a meeting there due to a funeral. Anybody else who'd like to speak on the consideration of Planning Commission recommendations regarding sober homes? Please come forward now and give us your name and address. Come on up.
My name is Dale Anselman, 462 Tyrell Drive.
Thank you, Dale. What do you have to say?
The really things that I'm after is, is the parking problem we have in the winter. The snow plowing, last, last winter, the plow guy had to go knock on the door, get these guys out to move the cars so he could go through the road. And I'd like to see the city put in a, in a ban, you know, no parking ban in the winter, get these cars off the streets so we can plow them. I mean, it's not good. It was bad the last couple of years. And how about, how about cutting down the, the speed in there? Can they put up a 20 mile an hour speed, speed zone, or is it unacceptable? They go around there, I'm telling you, they go around there with motorcycles, that the windows are, the windows are shaking. We gotta slow them down somewhere, they're gonna hit one of these kids. There's a lot of kids there now. There's five little kids right across the street from me, and I'm right next to the one at 460. So, we need, we need to get some control in there. Other than that, you know, some of the guys are nice, some of them don't give a damn what they do, you know, just like everywhere else. But that, that's my main concern, is do something with this street parking during the winter so we can plow these roads out and get, get, get us, if we can, drop that speed limit down. People don't need to go around there 60 miles an hour. We have four-wheelers making circles around Tyrell Drive, going as fast as they'll go. That, that, that shouldn't be. Not with kids out there on their bicycles. So, that's my main concern.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on the Planning Commission's recommendations? Anybody else? Please, come on up. That's what we're here for.
Hi, I'm Mary Sauer. I live at 450 Tyrell Drive. For those of you who aren't familiar with Tyrell Hills, there are 26 houses. It's kind of behind Ace Hardware in that area. You probably know where it is, but you should drive through there and see. There's 26 houses in a very small area. And when I walk the dog, four times around is a mile, little less than a mile, up the hill, down the hill. On this side of the circle, I like it better, because we're going down the hill. The guys there are friendly, I've never, you know, I, and I told Sheila, if there's a problem, I'll be the, you'll hear from me. She told me that her goal, she took me on a tour of the very first house in there, and she had 12 people in there. I was, thought, wow, that's a lot of people for that house. And she herself told me that she was gonna divide some of the bedrooms, and she was gonna make it into 12. Now, I was under the assumption that the, the guideline was single-family for our neighborhood. I think that's what it is. Also, if you have, you can only have four unrelated people in a house, so I don't know how she can, she can have 12 in there. She also told me she's looking for more houses in our neighborhood, because it's handy, and some of the people don't drive, many of them do, and so, parking on the street is, and the driving is bad. But she also wanted to look through our house, and she said, tell me when you want to sell it, because I'm interested in buying it. Now, that's a concern for me, because I think two of the sober houses in the neighborhood, that's a great plenty. There's, we have a little dog, lots of speeding. I have spoken to three different neighbors. One of them said there was loud music. She didn't want to say anything, because she's new in the neighborhood. The other was parking. I talked to another lady who couldn't come tonight, and she asked me to say that she called the, has called the police twice and got in her car and drove after the people and said, I won't tell you what she said to them, but she said, you need to slow down. There's a lot of kids in our neighborhood, and it's, it's not safe. What else was I gonna say? And I would like to see guidelines for our area established, so that we know what they are. I talked to another couple who just moved in there recently, and they were told that it was a single-family area, neighborhood. They thought, great, they want to start having kids, this is great, nice family area. Oh, gee, I guess it isn't. So, that's a concern for me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Please come forward.
Bruce Janowick, 448 Tyrell Drive. I like Steve and some of the others who were here back in May and voiced my concern. At that time, my primary concern, not knowing a whole lot about sober homes, was what's it going to do to the value of my property. I'm still here concerned about the same thing, but I'm far more knowledgeable now than I was back then about sober homes. I've spent considerable time researching the effects of sober homes throughout the nation. And while I fully stand behind the philosophy of sober homes, my family, like many families, have experienced, have personal experience with chemical dependency. So I'm not a stranger to it. I personally haven't experienced it, but through my family, I have. So it's in my interest to see that these sober homes do function as they are intended to. What I've found across the nation is that a lot of the reason, the majority of the reason why they are starting to fail is because of an over-concentration of homes in an area. If you look throughout the country, and I can cite a few areas of the country that might be worth looking into, Costa Mesa is one of them. And they've adapted regulations. They've also had federal juries making decisions on the fact that they are going to incorporate regulations. Delray Beach in Florida, Boynton Beach down in Florida, again, similar type things. What I'm asking is that you, the council, be proactive in preventing the problems that these people have experienced before they become an issue. And I don't think that that's an unreasonable thing to do. There's literally thousands of these sober homes throughout the nation. There isn't one here, one there. They've been around since 1989, and possibly before that. So I think it's absolutely essential that we be proactive in addressing this thing, and that we be proactive in implementing some regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Anybody else wish to speak on this? This is your chance. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Great, come on up.
Hi, my name is Kay Adler. I live at 456 Tyrell Drive. I'm pretty new to the area, so I've never been to one of these meetings before. So I guess I'm curious as to how long it will take for us to get some answers. There's a few people tonight who spoke about their concerns, but the concerns are for the entire neighborhood, and all of the neighbors here pretty much the same way. So how long does it take to get an answer back?
I can share this with you, Kay. The council has already ruled on this. And I was on the council.
Okay.
And it was how many years ago, Mr. Chansky? Four years ago. And the ruling is sober homes are allowed. So you got an answer.
Sober homes are allowed?
Are allowed.
But we know nothing about how many people are allowed to be?
There's no restrictions on it.
Nothing?
Well, outside of, outside of our state building codes, correct, Mr.? Yeah. Just like there's no restrictions on you moving into a house. It's the same thing. That was the ruling from the council four years ago. So the answer has been made.
So nothing will happen?
Well, we don't know about that. That's what we're here for now. And it could take years, and nothing may change. I mean, it can happen that way. I don't want you to say, I don't want you to look forward to something changing tonight. It might. I don't know. We can't discuss this amongst ourselves prior to when a motion is made. That's the law. So if you're here tonight, you'll find out if something changes tonight. Okay? Anything else you'd like to say, not about procedure, but about sober homes?
The safety issue is a big, is a big concern. So I hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Come on forward.
I am the oldest resident, or one of the oldest ones in this area. We live, Ann Richardson, 449 Tyrell Drive. When we moved and bought the house, it was an area that was restricted to families only, no rentals even, not even a rental of a room in somebody's house. But as people got older, as neighborhoods do, they died, or moved, or got to the rest homes, and little by little, we've had new families move in. What we're concerned about is the number of sober houses. I mean, one, we weren't even told they were going to come in. I don't know if that's a rule that you're supposed to tell the neighborhood. I know on certain people that go to jail, when they go into a neighborhood, the neighborhood is supposed to be notified. That is not apparently the case in this. Now, we have two. What we're very concerned about is a third one coming into our 26 houses in our circle. Our houses are going to be worth very little by the time we get two, three, four, how many sober houses are coming into Tyrell Drive? So we have that concern. Not only the young families that are coming in, but the worth of the neighborhood. So please keep that in mind. I don't know how you would like to have three or four sober houses in your own neighborhood, but please consider that.
Thank you, Ann. Anybody else wish to speak on the issue of sober homes? And the Planning Commission's recommendations to the council? Anybody? Want to ask a third, a second time? Anybody wish to speak on sober homes? Now, before I ask for a third time, when I close the public hearing, you won't be allowed to come back up and speak. So this is it. If you want to speak a second time, this is it. Come on. Thank you. I know it takes a lot to come up. Thank you.
Sharon Janowick, I live at 448 Tyrell Drive. My concern is, earlier you talked about getting a group together to address the lighting and, you know, whatever. That's important, I think. But this is really important for our neighborhood. I think the council or whoever should commence, or Chansky or whatever should look at, there should be regulations for all housing. Rental, sober homes, residential apartments, there should be regulations. Brainerd has none, and I don't think that's right. I think there should be a percentage of sober homes allowed in an area. Maybe it's a 3% over, you know, 24 homes, maybe three of them could be, whatever. But there should be regulations, and there should be a percentage of what can be put in to an area. And I just think, it's, it's just kind of laughable to me to think, you're concerned about lighting, but you're not concerned about the safety and welfare of the citizens of Brainerd, as far as their housing goes? That's crazy to me. I think that's a little bit more important.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak about it? Okay. Steve, this young lady hasn't spoke yet at all. No, 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 you, let's let her go. But you can come up if you want to. You're better looking than he is.
She is, by far.
All right. Steve, tell us what you want.
And much younger than me, too, right?
I'm going to ask, since we're really getting in deep here.
It'll be short.
Well, that's right. And let's try not to repeat what everybody else is saying.
I won't. Okay. I only have one thing to say, and that's it. And I agree with Sharon. I do believe, and I realize that the system doesn't always move fast. I understand that. But to stretch it out for years, it's just, that's just not even acceptable. I don't care where you're at. Something needs somebody as a group, however you do it. You do need to look at it, and you do need to. You have on record from the last meeting, the guidelines that the city of St. Paul uses, and it's working for them. It's got distancing, it has numbers of people, how many you can have in a neighborhood. And if it's working for them, something can work for us, rather than having nothing. We need you, the city council, and the city of Brainerd, to do something. To come up with some kind of a plan that not just accommodates sober houses, it accommodates the residents that live there. So we're counting on you. We're expecting you to do something. We're all taxpayers, and we expect something to be done, plain and simple. So, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you. All right. We're only on people who have spoke once. Go ahead. State your name and address.
Lorraine Bemis, 445 Tyrell Drive. And I agree with everything these people have said, so I'm not going to bother repeating it. I just, we should have been shown some consideration before we got two. I mean, I, you know, admire these fellows for trying to straighten out their lives. But to have two of these in our neighborhood, and the traffic by my house, and the motorcycles, I don't know how many motorcycles they have down there, but they really rev them up when they come by my house. And the noise is irritating, and if there was a small child, and they move fast, and also the vehicles. And if there was a small child that ran out in the street, well, it'd be curtains. I think that there should be some control put into effect. And that's all I'm going to say right now.
Thank you. All right. I think I get the idea, but you're the citizens. You get to tell me what to do. We want to close this public hearing sometime tonight. Want to keep going? We can. Or do you want to let me close this public hearing and see what the council wants to? You can come up, Mary.
Okay. I just want to add one thing. Mary Sauer, I'm a retired first-grade teacher. I absolutely love listening to kids laugh and play. And for a while, when we moved into the area, believe it or not, we were about the youngest ones in the neighborhood, and we were close to 60 a long time ago. Now, when I'm out working in the yards in the flower garden, I hear kids, you know, on their skateboards and playing ball, because that's what they're used to doing, playing out in the street, because there's never been any traffic. Now, all of a sudden, moms and parents and neighbors are saying, oh, here comes, get out of the street, get out of the street, here comes somebody. It's not safe for the kids. Something has to be done.
Thank you. I've asked twice. I'm going to ask a third time, and then we're going to close the public hearing. All of us have phone numbers and websites on the city of Brainerd. So we're paid to listen to you. You've elected us to listen to you. So don't feel this is your only chance. But for tonight, we're going to close the public hearing at 8:54. And before I turn it over to the council, to see what they want to do, I want to see if Chief Bestel can help us with one thing. Somewhere along the line, I think there was some confusion between sober housing ordinances and city conduct legally. Chief, can you explain what you'd like? This is Chief Bestel, and if you haven't met him, he's a fantastic citizen of the city of Brainerd, and a great employee, and he'll help us with what to do. The noise ordinance thing is really tough, okay? I'm just going to tell you, it's going to be very hard for him, because they're coming on by the time, by the time any of his officers can get there. So I want to, I want to make sure that you don't hold his feet to the fire on that one. That's a tough one. But go ahead on what to do.
Yeah, I think about all your concerns. First of all, please call if something's going on in your neighborhood. I've taken notes down, we've already advised the staff as I listened here of some extra patrol and stuff like this. Our number one thing is if you call in, we will respond, and we will have an idea for you. A lot of the safety of the streets, especially over there, very well aware of the windy, up and down, close neighborhood you have there. So please call. But besides that, we will be over there. We'll be over there tomorrow. We'll stop over, and we'll take a look at things. We'll look at parking. One of the things that people forget is that anything that's on that roadway, that's us. We can take care of your problems. So please call. As far as the, you know, the issues on the residents inside the property, that's more David Chansky and the other city entities. So, you know, if you get a referral back to that, that's probably what we will do. But your concerns about the safety really concerns me, because I don't recall of ever putting an extra patrol out to our staff. Therefore, a call never came in to us. And so I'm really curious of who's been calling, but please, going forward, call us. Call us with your concerns, and we will address them. Tomorrow, if you want to.
Call 911?
Do not call 911.
Okay.
It rises to the level of emergency. However, you can call me tomorrow, and we can chat, and I'm more than willing to listen to you. I think I've heard enough already, so we will come up with some strategies, and we'll take care of them. But please call when something is going on, especially the safety of the children, which I think has been very highlighted here tonight.
It's 829-2805? Is that the number that you use?
Yes.
It's on, you can Google Brainerd Police.
Yes.
Just so you know. Okay. Thank you, Chief. So that's kind of a separate issue. Okay. You've heard from staff, or at least Mr. Naval, you've heard from the citizens, you've got a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Now's the time, if you choose to act with a motion, or questions, or discussion, or what you'd like to do on this, or nothing, which we haven't, we've done, we have that right now. So, and we can sit on it for four more years. So, yes, Mr. O'Day?
I'll speak to it. First of all, thanks.
We don't have any motions, so you can't speak to a.
I'll just speak to the subject.
Yeah.
The issue, if you will.
I'm allowing it without a motion.
I'm only one man here.
Mm-hmm.
So.
You're three.
It is a huge concern. I know we talked about the lighting thing earlier. Those are just things that come up. This is obviously more important than lights. I think everybody on here would agree to that. One thing that I think of with this whole thing, these are businesses, and we regulate what businesses can and cannot do in certain ways. Clearly, this isn't being regulated right now. I would support some type of regulation, whether it be distancing restriction, whether it would be a percentage, which you brought up. I know we're being directed not to, but if there's other cities that are doing it, I don't see why we can't do it. So I'm going to support that. I'm not going to put a motion out, but that's just my part of the discussion tonight.
Excellent.
I have a motion, if you're ready.
If you want to, go ahead. Gabe Johnson?
I had moved to authorize the implementation of the attached request for reasonable accommodation form with the sober house addendum.
Okay.
Second?
I have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingline. Please speak, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. I'd like to speak to the motion. I think this is one step towards addressing the concerns. I think the concerns that were brought up tonight need to be addressed at future meetings. I think local units of government can reduce speed to 25 miles an hour on certain streets, and I bet you Tyrell Hills fits that. The city council can ban parking on streets. And I think Tyrell Hills would probably be a good candidate for that. You have driveways, you have garages. It's more like Buffalo Hills, where we don't allow parking on the street. So I think there are some things that we can and should do. But when it comes to the existence of these houses, it's federal regulations that we can't override locally. They just exist. There are some things we can do, and I think this step, and I think, I commend Mike and the hard work of the Planning and Zoning Committee for bringing this forward. And I think this is one good step, and I think we have many more steps to make. and I think we have many more steps to make. And your feedback is greatly appreciated, and keep pressing us, and we'll keep doing what we can.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anybody else wish to speak? On this, let me go through all the council, but I'll let you speak, Dave. I have a comment. The way you just, I was going to vote against this, and here's why. I just don't think it does enough. But hearing Mr. O'Day and hearing you, I'm really, I'm going to support it, because you're right, as a first step. But if this is what we were going to do, to me, this is an information cheat. This doesn't address any of the concerns that I've heard tonight. That doesn't mean it doesn't have validity. But I'm hoping that I'm going to hear a motion referring this. And I don't know who to refer this to. I really hope it doesn't go to a committee like the Conduct on Premises did four years ago in 2017. And that committee has responded back to the council once in four years. So assure me, Mr. Johnson, that this is going to be something that, and I don't know who, SP&amp;W, I would guess, but right now, that's looking a little thin.
Yeah, I'll commit to you, Mr. Chair, that after this motion is voted on, I will make a motion committing it to go to SP&amp;W, and they can figure out where to go.
I appreciate that.
I'll recruit a couple guys.
What's that?
I'll recruit a couple guys, or girls.
I bet you there's people here that will help. Okay. Anybody else wish to speak on Mr. Johnson's motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bedeau.
I will speak on the next motion.
Okay.
I have a motion.
That motion carries. Mr. Johnson?
Okay, I move that we send the sober house issues and concerns of neighborhood safety to the Safety and Public Works Committee to be discussed and put a plan together next meeting, and I so move.
Second. And part of that was at the next meeting?
At the next meeting, it'll be on the agenda next meeting, yeah.
Thank you, we have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunig. Mayor Bedeau?
I just want to speak in support of the motion for two reasons. One, I think that looking at things and having some sort of regulation, whether it is that we choose to have regulation or not have regulation, the idea that we are taking it and taking it to that step, I think is very important. I do think that distancing restrictions are probably a good idea, just so that there is some sort of restriction that citizens can fall back on, at least so that there is some kind of reassurance as far as that. Having just actually toured one of these facilities, one of the homes that is in my neighborhood, your neighborhood as well, Kelly.
This is our neighborhood, by the way.
Yes, it is our neighborhood. I do really support what they are doing. I think it is something that we need in our community. It is very, very essential to making sure that the cracks that need to be filled and the net that we need to create as a society is actually in place. This is a facility that is very well maintained. However, that does not mean that the next facility will be. And also, the gentlemen that I've met in that facility are fantastic individuals with great stories. That does not mean that they will all be great individuals with great stories. My one concern in going into this home is, what is the regulation that we have in terms of the division of the home as well? How often can they change the rooms? How often can they divide the rooms? How can they just slap in a tiny little box that somebody lives in? Those concerns I do have, and I do just appreciate the motion so that we can at least investigate those things and come up with a solution that works for everyone.
Thank you, Mayor Bedeau. Anybody else wish to speak only on the motion to refer to SP&amp;W? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, so there's a couple of questions I want to ask the staff. And I want to give staff, now that they've heard a lot of what's going to happen, because it's going to fall to some degree on their shoulders as well, is there any other motions on this issue? Okay. Before we move on to the next issue, Paul Sandy? I've heard an awful lot of stuff about traffic and traffic restrictions and parking. I don't mean to put you on the spot right now, and we don't need a four-hour tutorial on the city code, but is there anything in a short period of time that you'd like to respond to? Or in the subdividing of houses and how many people can live in them? Because I know we have the, we do adopt the state building code, right? Yep, that will be Mr. Chansky. So we're going to go, just so you guys can prepare, Mr. Sandy, Mr. Chansky, Mr. Langle. And you don't get to boo them or throw stuff at them, but they may have a few things after hearing testimony that they might want the council and you all to hear, okay? Mr. Sandy, you handle the roads. There's been a lot of stuff on, can you slow traffic down? Can you put road bumps? Can you reduce signs?
So, speed limits are a statutory regulation, so 30 miles per hour in urban districts. And upon a traffic study performed by the Commissioner of Transportation, you can change a speed limit. So as much as, you know, statutorily, the speed limit is 30, we can perform a speed study that sometimes just is a local thing with our patrol officers, seeing what the speed actually is. However, that would have to be done in order to officially change a speed limit. We have to go through the Commissioner of Transportation
Some guy in St. Paul?
At the state of Minnesota, correct.
Can you put speed bumps?
Well, speed bumps become a big maintenance hazard, as we all know.
Right, and we're maintaining other people's cars then?
Right. I am 100% for getting rid of on-street parking during winter months. We've proposed that before, however, it didn't go anywhere the last time we brought it up, and I'm not so sure that it would this time, but...
Can you do that geographically by neighborhood?
We tried that at one point, I believe.
So you can?
Back when Jeff Holsethther was around. He was a proponent of banning on-street parking during the winter months for purposes of plowing and increasing efficiency, but it didn't...
But you can do it by neighborhood, or...
We can ban street on any street we want. I mean, we can ban on-street parking on any street.
It wouldn't have to be citywide.
Yep.
Thank you.
But I am definitely a proponent of that.
All right, you've got an advocate there. Okay. Mr. Chansky, you've heard an awful lot of stuff about how many people can fit in these homes and how many times you can subdivide. Anything you want the council to know, or the press?
On that specific issue, again...
Anything you've heard tonight that you can do in three minutes or less?
Then to that, I'm going to start firstly, first, but again, I do want to thank all of you for being here and for all the times you have spoke to this issue. I also want to assure the public, as well as the council, that as Chairman Duval shared, this is not an issue that the planning commission dealt with lightly. And so it's not, their recommendation tonight was not based off of not doing the work. I actually truly believe that the planning commission likely would have made a series of regulation recommendations had it not been for the Federal Fair Housing Act, and we'll get more into that with SPW on the 18th. So that's what you can look forward to. Regarding the division of homes, how many people can be in a home that is regulated by the building code? Yes, actually, a rental ordinance does say no more than four unrelated people. However, again, the Federal Fair Housing Act exempts people from that regulation. When it comes to the number of rooms, that is based off, again, the building code and the size of the room. So they do have to have, the rooms have to be a certain size based off of how many people are in that room. So all of Ms. Havert's camps' homes do meet those. She does get permits, she works closely with my staff on those to ensure that the bedrooms are the right size, living spaces are the right size, egress is there, and meets all the requirements of the building code. So that is governed by the building code, and she does meet the building code as it states. So she is required to do that, and my staff. And all hers are also licensed as rentals. So, you know, other than the occupancy piece, she does have to meet the requirements of a rental home, so they have to be maintained. You know, they have property maintenance issues, all of that. If there are significant conducts on premise for the code, those things can be brought before the proper board to be considered if that rental license needs to be revoked, just like every other rental.
Thank you. Mr. Langle, you've heard an awful lot about the law tonight. Anything you'd like to share with us?
Well, I'll just make a couple of quick points, Mr. President. There's a couple of comments made about people having the right to know who's lived in the neighborhood, having the right to know if somebody's coming out of jail, living in the neighborhood. There's actually no requirement that there's any notice to be given to people who live there if somebody's coming out of jail, unless it's a sexual predator-type situation. There's no right to such information. It's public to the extent that you can find it. It's publicly available if you know the person's name, but there's no requirement that they give notice to neighbors, that they just came from jail, or anywhere else for that matter. The concentration issue, there's some discussions about that. I just want to point out that, yes, the city of St. Paul has a density restriction. The density restriction is based largely on parking issues. Keep in mind, the city of St. Paul is different than the city of Brainerd in terms of parking. They have a much higher density there than Brainerd does. And that density restriction was the result of a three-year-long study, if I remember correctly, that the city undertook to bolster their ordinance. And the reason that cities do these extensive studies is because many of these restrictions have been shot down by the courts, including density restrictions. There are courts who have ruled that density restrictions are in violation of the Fair Housing Act because it's prohibiting people with a disability from living where they want to live. So there's no universal, safe way, let me put it that way, to impose a density restriction. If one is imposed, you have to have objective data to back it up. And even then, any particular federal court judge might decide that it's still not good enough, that it still violates the Federal Fair Housing Act. So, just to keep that in mind. And again, that was following a three-year study that the city undertook. So I just want to make those couple of quick points. I mean, this really is... I understand everything that's being said, totally understand the frustrations, the anxiety, the concerns. But on the other hand, the city is required to not impose regulations that violate the Fair Housing Act as interpreted by federal court. It's that balancing act, it's defining that middle ground there, that's the challenge. And, you know, from my perspective, we want to do what the citizens request, to the extent possible, without putting the city, exposing the city to liability under federal law. It doesn't do much good to impose regulations and then have them shot down after two, three years of litigation, and then we're back right where we were in the first place, so... Just wanted to make that point, that we have to be cautious about how we tread going forward.
Excellent. Okay. I'd like to think we have a plan, and it's not going to be four more years, but it may not answer all your questions in two weeks. But we've got it going to three people. Thank you, Mr. Duval, for all the work of planning and zoning. And if you have further comments, based on what you've heard after the public hearing, all of us are on the city of Brainerd website. All of us have email addresses, as do does city staff. If you have a question of the attorney, please let Administrator Bergman know. He doesn't live and work in this city, so we go through, all of us go through Administrator Bergman. Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to move on if we can. What was the motion?
Didn't we have a motion?
I thought we already did that.
We voted, and then we sent it to committee and apologized.
No, that's all right, it gets to be, this is a very serious issue, we want to treat it that way. Okay. Item eight is dispensed for this evening. Unless you want to stay, you can't talk anymore. Nope, you call me, or call Mike, or David Chansky, whoever you want to. Or stand out on the steps, we'll be done in a half hour. All right, next up is item C, which is the call for applicants. Mayor Bedeau, you have some committees with applicants to...
We're going to go through this super fast, we're not going to even joke around tonight. So the mayor has the following committees that have seats available. The Cable TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2021, one term expiring 2022. The Charter Commission, one term expiring 2022. Housing Redevelopment, don't leave so fast. This is important. And I'd really appreciate some of you stepping onto some of these committees. Housing Redevelopment Authority, one term expiring 2022. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, three terms expiring 2022. And the Transportation Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2022, as well as Economic Development Authority, one term expiring 2027 and one term expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as council president, I have a position on the Police and Fire Civil Service Commission, one term to expire 2023. And of course, the Water Tower Committee has two positions available. Item nine is the public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda, don't get to talk about sober homes, to the attention of the council, and we really are going to keep it to three minutes. We'll open the public forum at 9:15 and ask if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to bring something forth to the council. Anybody at all? Third and last call, anybody for public forum? We will close the public forum at 9:16 and go on to the Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
For the mayor's report, is that what we're...
Yes, we're there, perfect.
Here, did you get one of these pieces?
I did, but see, now what you skipped was the staff reports, which is number 10.
A lot of times, they hide the mayor.
Number 10. If we're going in order, my sheet says number nine, then it says number 10, and then mayor's report is number 11. So, we're just going to follow along, if we're going to call me out for it. Oh, wow, mine does not, so... I have two things.
Agenda's here.
I have two things, and now you've just completely ruined what I was going to say. But I would like...
Staff report.
I'd like to make a comment about a number of citizens that have come into our area recently and who have joined Mike and myself here at the illustrious council table. That is the Box Elder population. Just want to make sure that we're all aware that Box Elders are here, and they are also here, so... But more importantly, oh, man, that was my worst joke of all time. That was terrible. That was terrible. Anyways, this is actually a bit of business that is super important to myself and to other citizens in the city of Brainerd. I have a proclamation before me, and this is actually a proclamation that is a joint proclamation between our two cities, myself and Mayor Darrell Olson of the city of Baxter, who will be making a similar, if not same, proclamation tomorrow. But I will read this to you, and of course, whereas, as will be said. Whereas Ron Stolsky compiled 389 career football wins, the second most of all time in the state of Minnesota. Whereas, he was a Brainerd football coach and head coach for 45 of his 58 years coaching. Whereas, Ron served as the athletic director for the Brainerd School District, establishing history and tradition for all Warrior Athletics. Whereas, the cities of Brainerd and Baxter would like to recognize Coach Stolsky's dedication to their community's youth. Therefore, I, Mayor Dave Bedeau, hereby proclaim October 9th, 2021, as Ron Stolsky Day. That's where you applaud. Not about that, okay. Well, so tomorrow, Baxter will be making a similar proclamation, and of course, there is the homecoming game that is coming up on Friday night, and there will be a pre-game celebration for him, as well as a ceremony for him on Saturday, October 9th, which I believe is taking place at the NP Event Center. So everyone that is available, please do attend. A gentleman that has touched many people's lives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my apologies for the agenda snap, who the one we got online has you ahead of staff. So we're going to start at staff over on this corner. Nothing from the chief, or do you have anything? All right, and we'll keep going, and Sean is not available. Finance Director Hillman, nope. Safety or Public Works Director Sandy, nothing.
That's not in the report, Mr. Chair.
Community Development Director Sandy? No, Chansky. I've done that, I think everybody should be just called Paul Sandy. It makes it so much easier, like George Foreman's kids. I apologize, Mr. Chansky, Community Development Director Chansky.
Just two quick things, Mr. President. The EDA is meeting this Thursday at 7:30 a.m. here in the council chambers. And this Saturday is the Third Annual City of Brainerd and Brainerd Early Childhood Family Education Touch a Truck Event downtown from 10 a.m. to noon.
Thank you. Attorney Langle? Fire Chief?
Just one thing to highlight, our open house is Thursday, October 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00, and certainly invite everyone to come down. We're excited that it's... We're excited that it's a goal this year, so come join us.
HR Director Schubert, nothing. Sharpen tier, HRA, you're online with us, anything you wish to add?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Eric, and Administrator Bergman.
Two brief things. One, we, the House Capital Investment Committee did do their bonding tour last week. We joined them at CLC and we talked about the water storage tanks and the extension of the Kynuna Lake State Trail. Thank you to Councilmember Stengel for attending. Secondly, just a big, 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 big thank you to everybody who participated in the Sesquicentennial. We had 26 events. I thought it was a huge hit. Many of the events had more people than I think we anticipated, so just a big thank you. And while we're talking about thank yous, the mayor did receive a thank you on behalf of our sister city, Lexington, saying, "I would like to say congratulations, Brainerd, 150 years. I wish you and the inhabitants of Brainerd beautiful celebrations with many new happy memories to cherish in the future." Mayor of Lexington, and if you want to give it a shot, I'm happy to. If you wanna bring your Swedish...
One mayor to the next.
Is there like a universal mayor or language?
Yeah, we're not gonna even try the first name. We're just gonna go with Mayor Lahiljberg.
Excellent.
That concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you very much, council member reports. Let's get down to the SP&amp;W side of things, I think you'll go kinda quick. Chairman O'Day?
How much time do I have?
Actually, your time ended about an hour and a half.
Yes, fantastic meeting, thank you everybody. I have nothing to add tonight.
Tiffany Stengel?
Sure, I just wanna add my own thanks for the Sesquicentennial bash and everything that went into it. Jesse did do an amazing job, even if I didn't get flapjacks at the Flapjack Festival.
Why not?
Cause they closed when I got there. But it was still amazing and it was so much fun. And then I also, as Administrator Bergman mentioned, I was at the House Bonding Committee. I will say, I think it was much more effective to take the Senate Bonding Committee on a tour of the facility than just talking about it, even with the pictures that had been assembled. I just felt like it was much more impactful. So, anytime we can take folks on a field trip, I think is probably something to note for the future. And then I guess anybody who is still here, who is interested in that Federal Fair Housing Act, I would encourage them, if they don't like the way it is, anybody who's still here or watching this on the Youtubes or what have you, to reach out to people who control the Federal Fair Housing Act. There happens to be somebody with an office on the second floor who would love to hear from you and is not city staff.
I think it got under your skin.
A little bit. There are things we control, there are things we do not.
Anything else Tiffany?
No, thank you.
Well, now I'm ready to go. I have nothing tonight.
Chairman Johnson?
Uh, one thing, we have an EDA meeting this Thursday and I'm going to read the agenda aloud for you all. No, but we are going out, we are issuing an RFP for Economic Development Services this year. So if you know an organization that could help with economic development, stay tuned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I have just a note that I will not be at that EDA meeting, I apologize. And we are going to adjourn tonight to three separate closed sessions. So one is for union negotiations. One is to discuss some public land, or some land acquisition. And the third one would be to discuss the zoning code. So, yes, Mr. Langle?
Could you just for technical reasons read the entire title for the land acquisition piece?
I thought I would, oh, for the land acquisition one. I was gonna read each one as we adjourned to them.
Oh, okay, that's...
I was just explaining to people what's gonna happen next. So yes, I will at the appropriate time when we adjourn. Cause I understand we're gonna adjourn, reconvene, adjourn, et cetera, okay? And that is that. So we are looking for a motion to adjourn to closed session, the first one, to pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03, subdivision 1B, for union negotiation strategy session.
So move.
Motion by Stunick, is there a second?